Thank you for your note. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen.
Aldermen, I was there on Tuesday, November 22, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Juddy.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I am here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Alderman Moran had a death in the family. He will not be joining us, and I have not heard from Alderman Lopez. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First, I wanted to introduce to the board our new emergency management director, that being Emily Marticello. She's going to come up and say a few words, but before she does, just introduce herself to you. But before she does, I wanted to speak about her for a moment. Ms. Marticello used to work for the city, for Justin Cates. After working for the city for a period of time, she held other positions, one of which most recently included working at FEMA. And after Justin Cates' departure, we examined the situation. We talked about this during the escrow process and decided we really need an emergency management director who can do a good job for the city, one who is qualified and can help us address various threats or potential threats that could come before us. So we had an interview committee consisting of Chief Rourke, Chief Buxton, and some other people. They considered various resumes, considered Emily to be by far the most qualified, interviewed her and recommended that we retain her, and I, of course, followed up on their recommendation. Now Emily has been with the city only a couple of weeks, but in those two weeks, and she knows all the players already, before joining because of her previous experience here. She joined the city and has done a fantastic job in first coordinating the holiday stroll security measures, working with police and fire and others. So I'm sure she will do a great job for the city over the long term, and maybe she can come up and just say hello and tell you a little bit about herself.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. And we should get a stepstool for me, but that's okay. So again, thank you, Mayor, and thank you just everyone who has just a few seconds of your time. Again, my name is Emily Marticello. I'm really excited to be returning to the city. Just briefly, just a little bit about me. I am a New Hampshire native, so I'm glad to still be here. I was working in Boston for a period of time, and I'm glad not to be doing that any again. So I have a background in emergency management. That's really where I've spent my career. I got my undergraduate degree at George Washington University and my master's from Champlain. I'm a certified emergency manager, which is the highest certification you can get from the International Association of Emergency Managers. And I actually started out, like the mayor said, here in Nashua as an intern under Justin Cates in the Office of Emergency Management, and I went on to work for the state Homeland Security and Emergency Management for several years, coordinating their grant programs, coordinating their training and exercise. And most recently, I was at FEMA as a senior advisor for the last seven years in the region office, in the Boston region office. But I'm most excited to be back here in Nashua, running the Office of Emergency Management. And if I could just briefly share a couple functions that I'm excited to work with all of you about. You know, the key roles of the Office of Emergency Management that was highlighted is, you know, planning, leading the city's emergency operation planning, our hazard mitigation planning, all required and needed in order for us to receive disaster funds after presidentially declared disaster. We support all of the alerts and warnings in the city, but most importantly, we help coordinate across the city during disasters and emergencies. And we do this by leading the Emergency Operations Center, and when there's incidents, we can support police and fire with their command. And so I really look forward to working with all of you to kind of integrate into the incident command system. Obie's very familiar with that and how we use a unified command in the city of Nashua when we're responding to incidents. And as we approach the winter season, I'm kind of excited to talk with all of you and work with all of you on how, you know, our appointed and elected officials are key parts of the incident command system and working through our chief elected official, the mayor, when there's an incident, integrating into our Emergency Operations Center so that we can have a coordinated and smooth response in the city. So that's really key, and it's a very abstract concept, so I just want to end by making an invitation and offer to you. At the holiday stroll, we'll have a command post set up, and if you'd like to visit the command post, and I can just give you a quick tour and overview of what Unified Command looks like in the city of Nashua, so you can get a better understanding on how you can be a part of that and really support our operations in an integrated way, so we can all support the residents when there is a disaster and emergency. And if you're interested in that, work through the mayor and we can give you a quick tour of the command post at the stroll. And otherwise, I hope to see you all at the stroll. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to Nashua.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Emily. And Madam President, there are a few other things I wanted to discuss with the board. Of course, the new tax bills are out, the first tax bills following the revaluation. There are questions have arisen, so I wanted to address a few things related to the revaluation and the new tax rate. First of all, the, as we've discussed before, the revaluation is a state-mandated, state-ordered revaluation, one that we were required to do following a very detailed set of state rules, state regulations, and state laws. Now, it is not something that I would have chosen to do at this time, were there a choice, but because of the clear effect that it was going to have. But what the state law, state rules require is that when such a revaluation is done, that the firm hired to do the revaluation assess all properties at 100% of fair market value. So in the past years, four years since the last revaluation, property, the values, prices of homes, as demonstrated by the market, have gone up 41%. And so most people saw a very large increase in their assessment. The problem that was created as a result of this revaluation is that commercial properties, malls, offices especially, did not go up nearly 41%. As you've seen over the past couple of years, those values, you know, COVID accentuated underlying trends, less people in the office, less people shopping, and have driven, have had a negative effect on commercial property values. At the same time, these COVID-related trends, as well as a demand here in Nashua, which exceeds the supply for houses, has driven the prices way up. Now, the price increases that we've seen are part of a, you know, regional trend, a state trend, a New England trend, and a national trend. Many homes across the nation have become much more valuable. But the disparity, the difference between the very large increase in the homes and the small increase in the commercial values is what caused the tax, the major tax increase. And the reason for that is that under state law, taxes are apportioned between taxpayers based upon fair market value, based upon assessment, which, as I've said, is 100% of fair market value as of April 1, 2022. Prior to the revaluation, homes represented about 65% of the total value of the city, and commercial property about 35%. As a result of the fact that homes went up a lot more after the revaluation, the value of homes as a proportion of the whole was more like 68% or very close to 68%, and the value of commercial properties around 32. So the shift of 65, paying 65% of the total to paying now 68% of the total means that the proportion of taxes paid by homeowners went up as a result of the revaluation. And that is the major problem that was evident going into the revaluation and which is playing out now. The taxes are difficult for people to pay, and these increases haven't, you know, have made things more difficult. The revaluation, again, is not something I or I think any of us here would have been chosen to do if there had not been, if there had been a choice. Now, one, there is one common misunderstanding, which is that the 2000, the new tax bill is double, the new, the new annual tax obligation is double of the tax bill that they just got. And that is not accurate for the following reason. The entire amount of the year's increase appears on the December bill. What do I mean by that? Well, to use a hypothetical example, let's say someone's taxes are $7,000 a year, which is fairly typical. Thirty five, and that was in 2021, $3,500 per bill. Let's say as a result of the revaluation and the new tax rate, the, now, the bill is, for that home, has gone from 7,000 to 7,500. Well, the December bill is the 3,500, which is half of last year's bill plus the entire $500 increase. So the December bill is 3,500 plus 500. When you add that to the 3,500 that was paid in June, it comes up to 7,500. But some people are thinking that because they received a bill for $4,000, in other words, the 3,500, which is half of last year, plus the entire increase for this year, $500, because they received a $4,000 bill, and this can be very confusing, they're thinking their new total annual tax is 8,000. It's not. It's 7,500. So that the bill they will receive in June of 2023 will be half of 7,500 or 3,750, which is less than the bill they just received. Now, I can answer any questions about that. It is very confusing, but that is the situation. Again, the taxes are difficult. Now, people have asked, you know, the city budget drove this up. Well, if we look to the city budget, the city budget was up 4.1%. Not 25%, not 20%, not 10%, 4.1%. As part of that increase was included a $4.4 million increase from the state pension fund, unrelated to any increase in wages. They're just building up their assets, they say. So that 4 point, without that $4.4 million mandated increase by the state of New Hampshire, the city budget without that would have been up about 2, 28, 29, less than 3%. When we have an inflation rate of what, 5, 6, 8, whatever it is. So the portion of the budget that the city has some control over went up about, went up less than 3%. So, I mean, that makes it, I think, fairly obvious that the revaluation is having a significant impact on homeowners. Again, that is difficult, and we've talked about the fact that we're going to increase the elderly exemption, and thank you to the people who made that formal proposal, for those people who can qualify, who do qualify for the elderly exemption. The, 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 the tax are difficult to pay, but this is the system we're given by the state of New Hampshire, and we really are obligated to follow state law, and if we don't, you know, the DRA would sue us. So that at least provides some additional information regarding the new tax bills. On a more happy note, the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter announced today that they got a major grant from the Bezos Day One Families Fund. This is the Bezos who owns the billionaire, Amazon. They got $1.1.25 million from, or will be getting that, from this Bezos fund. And they, they say this is a game changer for them. It will really be a huge boost in terms of their future, and they are looking forward to opening their shelter early next month. This has nothing to do with that. This is in addition to the funds raised for the shelter, but that is very good news for the community. I did want also to mention that Doria Brown will speak to you very briefly during public comment regarding the item that's on the agenda, the adoption of the Community Power Aggregation Plan. Now, there's no, there's no suggestion that you should vote on that. That should go to a committee. Doria and others can speak to you about the details and, which are fairly involved. But this is a way that the state has authorized communities to assume the purchase of power, either in concert with others or on their own, to try to save money for electric consumers. So by buying power at a cheaper rate than Eversource offers it for, which is now 22 cents a kilowatt. So Doria will just tell you a few of those details, but again, there's no need to take this up tonight or vote on it. That will go to a committee and wherever the president decides, and a lot of detail can be provided there. We have the holiday stroll coming up on Saturday. I hope everybody can make it. We've had to miss two years as a result of COVID, so it's very nice to be getting back together finally after a long absence. And I know many people are looking forward to that. You already heard from Ms. Marticello that the security plans are all in place, and everybody is well-schooled in what they should do to ensure the greatest effort towards ensuring safety of our, of our annual event. And we will be lighting the tree up by the Hunt Building, and I hope everybody can make it. And finally, Thanksgiving is on Thursday, and I wish you all and everyone in our community a wonderful holiday, wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to officially inform the mayor and to the taxpayers that a bill has been submitted again that I did work on up at the State House, I think Representative Clea remembers it. Our friends up in the state, I'll let you guess who, tried to throw it in the trash bin three times. The last time, I had to go out to the dumpster to get the bill, but I was able to bring it back to the floor and to discuss it. And I'm hoping that it goes a little bit easier, but that would have added exactly what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. It would have helped out the taxpayers of the city of basically $2 million, which comes down to 1% of the tax rate. That they really need to adjust that. So it is on file. Wish me luck. Either that, throw me a light preserver. So we shall see what happens. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank you for recognizing the importance, again, of the Emergency Preparedness Director. My previous life being a deputy fire chief, there's many different times that the incident does just not end when the last fire truck leaves. And so you need somebody to, able to coordinate and to get these type of situations. And so I would like to welcome Emily Marticello into this new position and wish her the best of luck. I think it's a very important position for our city. And talking about jumping from the frying pan into the fire with the holiday stroll would be your first time out, and I know she'll have much success. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I had, I think it's two questions to follow up on your remarks regarding, regarding taxes. The first is, why did the city decide to bill residents for the difference, that, that higher portion of, of the tax bill in December as opposed to just splitting the difference as we've done in the past?
Well, we didn't make any decision. And again, we're following state law here, but we've done the same thing in the past. So the, the procedure every year is that the June bill, because the budget isn't even passed yet, the June bill is equal to one-half of the previous year's bill. So on the example I gave you, if a person had a 2021 total bill of 7,000, the bill for June is 3,500, sent out before the budget is passed, before there's any knowledge regarding what the new tax rate might be. Then, then the second bill, it always includes the entire increase for the year. In this case, in the hypothetical I gave you, that would be, you know, if, if the, the bill went to 7,500, it would be the, the difference between the 7,000 the year before and the 7,500 that is due for 2022. But you will see the effect of that in June of 2023, because the bill coming out in June of 2023 will be half of the 2022, which will not be 4,000, but will be 3,750, half of, of 7,500. So the bill in June will be less than the bill in December, which is typically the case. And that is what state law basically requires, and that's what we've always done.
Follow up, please. Thank you. Regarding the assessments, you mentioned it had to be done every five years. Can we redo it within that five years, given that market, market conditions, in my opinion, well, it's fact, have changed? Interest rates are up, demand is down.
The answer is yes. Now, the, the values were done as of April 1, 2022. So actually, values went up beyond April 1, 2022. And in order for, I mean, we have to see an actual impact on the market. We actually have to see property values go down below, probably significantly below where they were in, in, on April 1 of 2022. But if we see that, if that happens, and that can be documented, then, and the assessors are always looking, you know, at the way the trends are going. If that happens, then yes, we should do another revaluation because, and this would not be a full measure and list. It could be done more quickly, still not cheap, but it could be done more quickly. And were the home values to go down and the, and the commercial property to stay relatively the same, and then, yes, I think it would be advisable to do another revaluation to reverse the reallocation towards residential, which just occurred. If we could make that, that reallocation go back the other direction, that would be worth doing.
Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else respond to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Marticello to be joining the team at the city. The, you know, safety of a city our size that continues to grow is incredibly important, and I think spreading it too thin could cause something to happen that we don't want to. So it's, it's great that we have that. I think it's an important piece of the city. On the taxes that the mayor mentioned, thank you for, for going over that. I think it's important. Lots of misconceptions out there. There's lots of things being spread out in the social media platforms that just aren't true, and a lot of them want to just blame us, and that's fine. You know, we could take the heat, but it's, you know, you want to know exactly what's causing taxes to go up and how it works. And I, I think people just obviously don't watch us because, you know, we're not as exciting here. But if, you know, we can spread it out there as aldermen and all the women, what it actually, the tax breakdown is and how it actually works, then maybe we can have more people understand how, how these things are affecting their taxes. One thing the mayor didn't mention is the education. So the state obviously started to send money now to private religious schools, and that takes away the money that would go to public schools where we have to foot that, that bill here and continue to help our public schools with money coming from the city. So that's one thing. And lastly, I just want to say that I think the mayor and I think the committees we have in the city do a great job of trying to reduce our budgets. You know, a great thing that they did was, for instance, the electricity. You know, they, they negotiated that 5% rate where Eversource is 22 cents or 22%, 22 cents per kilowatt hour. So that's a huge difference. If the city was paying 22 cents, we, our budget would be, be skyrocketing. So it's things like that that I think that make, make the city work, and I think it, we're doing a great job, or at least the city's doing a great job of trying to manage that. And like you said, taxes, the whole thing's tough, and it's going to be tough to get through, but thank you for explaining that.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for bringing Emily back to the city. I think she's very well-educated and has got a great background. So welcome, and I'm sure you'll do a great job for us. Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of September 14, 2022 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Alex Como, Ward 6 Alderman, regarding Zoom security.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have Ms. Doria Brown. Our energy manager. Welcome.
Hello. I promised to make this quick, but there is something on the agenda today that I think you all should be paying attention to. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution 2275, which is the adoption-
Point of order. We technically aren't taking action on that. We are referring it. So I think that perhaps those comments would be better served at the second period to be fair to everyone in the public.
Well, she is a city staff, and I'm going to give her some leeway if the board does, has no other objections.
Okay, thank you. Of the adoption of the city of Nashua's aggregation plan, adopting this plan will be an important milestone in launching the Community Power Program in spring and early summer of next year. Today, you wouldn't be taking action on the aggregation plan, but this is the first step in approving it because it would actually be illegal to take action on the plan because you need two public hearings beforehand to do so. So on the 29th of November, we will be having a public hearing in the Aggregation Committee. And on December 13th, before the Board of Alderman meeting, we will be having a public hearing at 6 PM. So that is a great time to hear what the public has to say about the aggregation plan. The Aggregation Committee has fully vetted this plan and supports its approval. I personally have been working on this project for three years since I started here in 2019. We all know that electricity prices are historically high, and here in Nashua, it is definitely the same. Approving this plan and starting the Community Power Journey will allow Nashua to take control of its electric supply portion of the energy bill. And when I say Nashua, I mean the community of Nashua, not- And when I say Nashua, I mean the community of Nashua, not just city buildings. And in doing so, we'll be able to use our buying power as a collective to drive down electricity rates in a way that Eversource isn't able to do for our community right now. This is an exciting opportunity for Nashua, and I'm excited to see it through to launch. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding the multi-year contract award ClearSky.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to approve the continuation of the Remote Application Management Support Services Agreement with ClearSky in the amount of $270,000, which is $90,000 a year, or $7,500 per month, for a 36-month period, starting July 1, 2022. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology Fund, 54428 Technology Operations General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding million-dollar contract award replacement radios.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve and award the Soul Source request for the purchase of police and fire portable radios, along with accessories to Motorola Solutions, Inc., in the amount of Funding will be through Department 157 Citywide Communication Fund, 81300 Machinery and Equipment slash Capital Project Fund Radio Communications Upgrade.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I am in total agreement with Alderman Gueva on this particular item. Some of the radios that are in service right now were in service when I was on the job several years ago. Not that I'm that old, but I think it's been at least six years since I've been retired. And as with any type of electronic equipment, it gets beat up. In the case of the firefighters, they're warned by the firefighters entering in hostile environment, and so therefore, they have done their purpose. And like everything electronic, it has a life expectancy. And keeping that in mind, the new radios that we'll be purchasing will have tracking basic devices on it that for police officers and firefighters that every time that they key the mic has like similar to maybe a bad description by a layman here, but like a transponder that will say, "Exactly." So in the case of the police officer, if he's running down the back alley, cannot get a good verbal report, he can key the mic, and that information will go out there. Enhancing his safety, which is what we want. And this is the same with the firefighters and everything else. So this is a new generation, new upgrade, and when you look at the balance, what is the life of our police, you know, the price of our lives of our police and firefighters? I hope you all will support with me to give them the proper tools and equipment to allow them to do their jobs. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. Echoing the words of both my colleagues, one of the things that also came out in finance was that the old radios would be used elsewhere in the city. So it's not like they're going to end up in a landfill or anything of that nature. The city will continue to use them and for parts in this as well. And piggybacking on what Alderman O'Brien had said, the safety ping would allow them to, in a fire, normally they have to wait for someone to respond to say that they're safe. This, they can actually just make a, for lack of a better word, I'll call it a ping, and it happens all at once. So it cuts the time. They know that their, that their firefighters are safe and so on. So again, echoing the words of it's safety and it's, and it's not a waste of funds, because the, the old radios will be used elsewhere in the city soon.
If I may, Madam President, what you talk about is personal accountability. Is somebody trapped or not trapped?
Okay. Motion is for, motion is to recommend the purchase.
To approve an award.
To approve the, the purchase. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Dominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the September 26, 2022 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the September 7, September 21, and October 5 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 17, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the September 6 and October 3 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August 16 and September 20, 2022 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
None.
Unfinished business ordinances?
None.
New business resolutions?
First reading of R-22-075 relative to the adoption of the Nashua Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clay, and Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing to be held jointly with the Electric Aggregation Committee at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December 13 in the Aldemantic Chamber. New business ordinances?
First reading of O-22-037, authorizing stop signs at the intersection of Charles Street and Terrace Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the committee on infrastructure. Period for public comment. We have three people signed up.
Once again, I ask not to be interrupted. I have my own timekeeping device. Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, Nashua, New Hampshire. So I was here two weeks ago. I was pretty sick then. I had been at home for about four or five days sick, but I really thought it was important to come, and I talked about right to know. And I've been here before talking about right to know being as important and should be as equal as the right to vote. Okay? You should look at both of them the same. And the next morning, I got up and I thought, you know, I just don't feel like I'm getting through to these people. And then I realized, how many of you have ever had to file a right to know to get a piece of information? Anybody? Okay, one person. So I realized that most of you have no idea what it feels like to have to file a right to know. So within this city, you have filed a right to know.
No.
That's what I'm talking about, within this city. So you make a request to HR, and you say, hey, can I get this job description? I'm pretty sure that you get a reply right away. Hey, Alderman whoever, here's, here's what you, here's what you need. This is where there's two different, again, classes in this city. You're in one, and I'm in the other. And all these people, well, not city employees, are in the other. All the residents are in the other. I file a right to know, and it goes through hoops and departments and days, at least several days, up to usually five when they have to reply. And it usually, I have to say, this is a right to know. Again, I don't have to go to the poll and go, I have a right to vote. It has to be the same. You don't get it. And that's what I realized that, that next morning, when I got up and I went, they, they just don't understand, because they don't have to do this. They don't have to jump through these hoops, which I think is probably, not only is it malfeasance, but I think on some level, which I haven't investigated yet, is illegal. So the two other points that I want to make tonight, along the same lines of different classes, there used to be cushions on these benches for the residents who sit here. And when I tell you we sit here for two, sometimes four, sometimes six hours, because I have, it's, it's really difficult. I'd like to invite you to change places with us, so you can see how uncomfortable it is and how bad it is for your body. And the other thing is the clock. You all get to see the clock. Donna, could you point to the clock that I get to see with my time left? Yeah, can you see how the difference is? This one you can all see, that one nobody can see. I would request, along with the cushions, that another clock that size-
Your timer's up.
-be put in the same spot. And thank you for allowing me to finish, Madam President, my comment. Oh, by the way, the luncheon for June Karen was wonderful.
Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. Following up on her comments, I want to thank Senator Rosenwald for her bill that got signed into law to establish a right to know. Ms. Bredman for the state, and that's going to be a big help for everyone fighting here with City Hall to get the access to public documents. And I want to say to the Emergency Management Director, there's a very serious concern. I'd like to hear what the city's plans are for, which is that according to our local electric utilities, if there is a cold snap of more than three days near zero this winter, there will be rolling blackouts across New England. So I want to know what Nashua's plan is to prepare for that, because that means no heat for anyone who doesn't have, you know, like a fireplace or a kerosene heater. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I'm really concerned about getting rid of Zoom public comment for those who are disabled or home caring for children, or the disabled or unable to come to City Hall. You shut down their ability to speak to you and to the citizens of Nashua. Those who've participated in Zoom public comment include Alderman Moran's wife, who's home caring, who's often home caring for her young kids, my husband, who had a second shift job caring for disabled adults, and an elderly resident who's unable to drive at night. And what about those who are immune compromised? They won't, they will not be here at City Hall. They have to be at home. And with the new tax bills coming out, the elderly and the disabled who are on a fixed income, and parents of young kids trying to make ends meet are going to be hurting financially, and you won't be hearing from them.
One minute.
And their letters aren't even included in the board packets, and they have been silenced. And I wanted to let Mayor Donchus know that in Shertlift versus Boston, which he sided in defense of having my Sabreman sports flag removed, the City of Boston recently agreed to pay $2.1 million to Shertlift's legal team. And so that's what the city's up against as it continues to practice viewpoint discrimination against me and my flag. Thank you.
Good evening. Norman LeBlond, 20 Harley Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. This is my first time over here. I usually watch you on TV. The thing is, well, not the thing is, but when you, when you people speak, I've got a hard time hearing. So you either put, you got to put the volume up a little. I'm over here talking about the taxes that the mayor discussed this morning, earlier. The first, the first one, I, my tax that got back in July, I guess it was August. I was eligible. Cost me nothing. Couple, a week or two, after the assessment was done, I didn't know when they, when they took it, I just received this last week here. Now I've got to pay $1,200. And, you know, and I'm wondering why. I said, what happened? What happened? I says, wow. I says, I just don't understand. I know we, the mayor tried to explain it a little bit, but it's, you know, it's kind of confusing if you're not dealing with this kind of, and these figures. I'm elderly, I'm retired. I've lived here in the city in Ashway all my life, grew up in Ashway all my life. Everything's going fine until we get, we start getting this stuff here, these taxes. And man, I says, wow. You know, you know, people are, the people are sitting down over here. You've all been elected by the voted, by the people of Nashua.
One minute.
You know, so you ought to be taking about the people of Nashua before you pass anything out that concerns a lot of money. It's going to affect them later on. I know there's been a lot of, uh, LeBlonde saying in the paper, I says, I mean, the million dollars are going off of LeBlonde and everything else. I said, wow. I says, we, no, who's going to end up paying for that? We're going to be paying for that later on, or our kids are.
30 seconds.
Anyway, that's all I got to say anyways. Hope everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too. Thank you.
But I think what I'm looking at right now, it looks like I'm going to get the end of the turkey.
Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here tonight.
You start over here every weekend, and about time I don't have anything to say until you get over there, and I have a lot to say. So it's on the other side.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just got a few things as always. You know, thanks for the, the public for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. I appreciate all their comments. I too want to wish them a happy Thanksgiving. And just to answer one of the questions, when I was an alderman-elect, I came to many meetings, many long meetings. I think one was a mask meeting where it was very long, and I sat on those benches. And they're, they're tough. I won't lie to you, those are tough benches. So I appreciate the people that are able to come out and sit on those for, for long periods of time. You know, there was a shooting in Colorado last week, and I think it targeted people of the LGBTQ community. And I think we've been very lucky here in New Hampshire that we haven't had a major incident. And I say that knocking on wood, because no city, no state necessarily is going to be, have aversion to having that at some point. And with having an emergency director on board and trying to go out there and not promote hate, I think it's important that we do that. I think whether you believe in certain lifestyles or not, just let it go. We shouldn't be trying to promote hate or even see it out there. It's just, it's just hard to see these things continue to happen in this country. And, you know, I worry that, that someday it's going to happen here, and so we got to continue to try to do things. And I'm not talking about us here, I'm talking about everyone in the city to try to avert that. With that being said, I want to wish everybody here in the chamber as well, and all the citizens, a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you guys all get to spend it with family and friends, and especially want to wish Alderman Moran and his family the best during this tough time. You know, and it's a great time, Thanksgiving's a great time to relax and regenerate. And I will be on Thanksgiving for the first time. My sons do it every year, running the Great Gobbler. I'm in tip-top shape, and as you can certainly tell by looking at me, I'll be lucky to finish it standing up. So, you know, if I don't make it back here next week, you know that I'm stranded at Nashua South somewhere in the woods. But thank you, and everybody, best wishes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to send out my condolences to Alderman Moran and his family. It's very difficult to lose someone, but especially during holidays, it can be very tough. Secondly, the annual senior outing was held last Sunday. We had almost 300 people, which is great, since we were quiet for two years. The mayor and I stood outside at Stelo Stadium handing out bags, our dinners, and we were able to get over 100 gifts for the raffle. A lot of businesses came forward and gave gift cards and- A lot of businesses came forward and gave gift cards and different things like that. Of course, I usually bring my wine so that, you know, people think I take. So that went very well, and they're looking forward to next year. Thank you, Alderman Timmons, President Wiltshire, and Alderman Dow for coming. Of course, he's a senior resident, so would have to be there. Also, there is a gentleman that keeps calling my house lovely, leaving me a message concerning something on Harvard Street. Unfortunately, he doesn't leave his phone number. So obviously, I cannot get back to him. So if he would call me next week after the holiday and leave his phone number, if I don't answer, I will certainly get back to him with his questions. He's always happy. Thank you, and I'll talk to you soon, and then I have nothing. So please, please call next time and leave a number, and I'll get back to you. And finally, I'd wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and have fun at the stroll on Saturday.
Alderman Gavilla.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'll start with giving my condolences to our colleague Alderman Moran and his family. It's not an easy time to lose a loved one. And I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Truly thankful to serve our city in any way I can. And hopefully, we can all do some reflecting over the next four days. And also just want to say the Local 789 Fireman's Ball was great the other night. You can't count out Alderman O'Brien, he has some moves on that dance floor. He's still got it.
I thank you for realizing.
He's still got it. So it was a great event for all who attended. I know the mayor was there, and I was there, and Alderman O'Brien was. Great event for Local 789. So thank you, have a great Thanksgiving.
Alderman Dow.
Couple of quick things. One, my condolences to the Moran family on their loss. Any loss is bad, but at this time of the year, especially as we started into the holidays, is very sad. So my best wishes to them. Also, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you know, safe and prosperous Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much. The other thing I want to mention is tomorrow, we'll be changing all the direction of the streets around Franklin Street School. The signs went up today, but I didn't see them, but presumably they were supposed to put bags over them so people didn't get confused. Tomorrow, we do all line painting, and the police will be there to make sure that people painting in the middle of the street don't get hit. So, and school starts there the following Monday. And the first day of school, there'll be police detachment on either end to make sure that people understand they're one-way streets now and you can't go the way you might have gone before. It's all for the safety of the students. That school is for preschool, little, really little kids, and also the Brentwood, Brentwood School. So been a lot of work to get the school ready. And there'll be some more work done next summer, a little bit during the school year. Not to interfere with the students and the teaching, but be careful of the streets because they're not the way they used to be.
Alderman Kamal.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to offer my condolences to Alderman Moran and his family. As some others have said, there's no good time to lose a family member, but it's especially tough this time of year. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, safe travels, as I'm sure people are going to be moving around to see family. And looking forward to the stroll Saturday. It's been a couple of years, so it'll be good to get back out there. I'll be there with my kids. Feel free to come seek me out, I'm easy to spot in a crowd. Please, only if you approve the job we've been doing. If not, you can find one of my colleagues. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, thank you.
Yes. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I wanted to welcome our new emergency manager, Emily Marcell. I think I got that right. I'm really excited to have her on board. I wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We've got some pies to bake, so we're looking forward to getting home to do that. I also wanted to offer my thoughts to the Moran family, Lisa and Melbourne and their children. It's especially a hard time for them. And I wanted to report back on the Best Buddies Gala. We had a great group there. Alderman Cle was there, actually Alderman Moran was there as well. We just had a really nice night. It's a lovely event, and I'll be doing a table next year, so you all better be there. I also just wanted to say I'm sorry I missed the senior event, I thought I had to be of age. Ouch.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just give my condolences to the Moran family. I also wanted to, so the next few days, a lot of things going on, obviously. As a lot of people know, tomorrow night is a night when people traditionally go out and maybe meet up with old friends, they come home. Be safe, please get an Uber, taxi, drive home safe. Be careful. Don't want to have a bad Thanksgiving. Going into that, I hope everybody does have a happy Thanksgiving. And of course, on Saturday is the Holiday Stroll. That'll be a nice event. Unclear whether or not I will be there or not, but I will try to be. But hopefully, hopefully, everybody who wants to gets a chance to go. And I wish, again, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. So, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So I too wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And, you know, I'm assuming that you all, like I have, have received calls and communications from people since they got their tax bill. And, you know, it's very distressing to hear, you know, stories that people tell, you know, before they got the tax bill, there was, you know, the stories that people told about, you know, getting their new values, their new assessments. And, you know, values that just didn't seem to make sense. And, you know, they tried talking to the Vision, the company that did the valuations, and without, seemingly without any success. And now to get the tax bills that reflect those new valuations has been distressing to a lot of people. And it's distressing to hear the stories. And I don't want to make excuses for us, but, you know, we didn't do these valuations. They were done by a separate company, which has an excellent reputation. And I can only assume that the values they came up with are, you know, reflective of the true fair market values of the properties. And, you know, I know if you're not planning on selling your house, it really doesn't make much difference to you if it's, if they say it's worth $200,000 or if they say it's worth $500,000. It doesn't, you know, unless you sell the property, you're not going to realize that gain. But, you know, when you get, when people got their tax bills, all of a sudden, they're faced with paying these taxes. And when I hear, you know, someone like Mr. LeBlanc, who spoke to us earlier, it really, you know, it's really painful to hear. And I encourage people, you know, number one, if you don't think the values are accurate, you, you know, we didn't set the values, the Board of Assessors didn't set those values. But you do have a recourse. You can file for an abatement and have the Board of Assessors review those values to see whether or not they agree that they are in fact an accurate reflection of fair market value. If you just sit back and don't file for an abatement, there's nothing that the Board of Assessors can do for you. If you file for an abatement, at least you're giving them the opportunity to correct what you think is an error. And it may not be an error, and they may confirm the value. But if you don't try, you're stuck with the value as it is. So I encourage people to do that. You know, also people who are having trouble paying this new tax bill. You know, I remember, you know, our former treasurer, David Fredette, coming before us and making it very clear that the city is not in the business of evicting people from their homes. If people can't pay their taxes, the city and Treasurer Fredette and now new tax collector Griffin, you know, will certainly, you know, sit down with you and look at your situation and see whether or not, you know, either a payment plan can be devised, which would, you know, help you to pay your taxes. You know, or at worst, you know, you don't pay your taxes and the city just gets a lien on your property. And when you do sell the property or when you, you know, when the property is otherwise transferred, you know, then the city can collect the taxes. But I want to, you know, you know, I know I'll probably get into trouble for saying this, and people probably think it's insensitive, but, you know, the truth is, no one is going to move you out of your home. It really bothers me that people feel, you know, especially the elderly, they're looking at this tax bill and they're saying, there's no way I can pay this. I'm going to lose my home, I'm going to have to lose my home. And no, you know, if you can't work out a plan, you know, if the city can't provide relief in some other way, you know, the worst that can happen is that when you do sell the property or when the property is transferred, you know, hate to say it, but after your death, you know, the city will collect its taxes then. You know, I think I'm safe in saying that, you know, the chances of your not being able to stay in your home are almost zero. So, you know, people that are in that situation, you know, please don't become, you know, don't feel that all is lost, don't feel that, you know, that that is going to happen to you. I don't think it will. And, you know, we're, you know, the members of the Board of Aldermen, I assure you, are not happy about taxes going up. And you heard the mayor talk about, and if you've paid attention during the year, you've heard it explained many times that, you know, the city is limited by the state in, you know, how we can come up with the money to, you know, provide the services that you need. And, you know, you've heard it before, you know, most of our budget goes for paying for the people that work for the city, providing, you know, providing you the services, protecting the police who protect you, the firefighters who protect you, the teachers who teach the children, you know, the people who take care of the streets, plow the streets. You know, all of these people are entitled to be paid a fair wage. And in order to pay them that fair wage, you know, we, the city, have to tax you, the residents. And the help that we get from the state is, keeps dwindling every year. And so I apologize for going so long. I apologize to the people sitting on those hard benches. And thank you very much.
Alderman Lopez.
Actually, I want to thank my colleague, my fellow alderman, for expressing what he just did in admittedly blunt terms. But we often couch information so cordially that it's not unclear to, it's not clear to people who need to know it. So understanding your alternatives and your recourse is important. Filing for an abatement, contacting the tax collector, and exploring which exemptions you have and what your options are is important. Don't give up, don't get overwhelmed, particularly with the holiday season coming up. Feeling like there's no solutions, the city will work with you. And, you know, we do hear you around this horseshoe and the concerns that you have. I think the record speaks for itself. But I will say, when we discuss budget items and when we discuss expenditures and we review all the city departments and all the city's needs, taxpayers are at the forefront of our minds. And we do debate pretty robustly in this chamber whether we can afford certain things, whether we can afford not to pay for them. The Holiday Stroll being an example, you know, it was pretty hotly debated whether we would be able to fully fund the requests of police, fire, and, you know, emergency response. And the alternative is, what if we have a major event and we don't have adequate support? What if we have, you know, freezing cold weather during an emergency and we don't have a contingency plan for people who are displaced by fire? These are concerns that we have to weigh against the needs of taxpayers. And as was pointed out in the mayor's comment, we did not significantly increase the budget this year. It was less than half of what inflation is. And that was, you know, there were also a number of artificially imposed elements of our budget, the state being the most obvious example, that we don't have a lot of flexibility for. So we hear you, we're doing our best. If we can do better, we'll try to. And if people have ideas or resources or strategies that will help, then we're open to them. Doria Brown's energy-saving strategies helps the city budget tremendously. And a number of the investments we've made over the years in green energy, CNG, in, you know, purchasing the hydroelectric plants have helped us weather this particular storm much better than a lot of other communities around us. So I would say, ideas are welcome, accountability is key. Our meetings are always welcome to the public, even if the benches are uncomfortable. And they're also on TV if you want to watch from your comfortable armchair at home. So I would just try to say, don't lose heart and don't feel like you're not hurt. Even if you're calling Alderman Karen's phone, which is apparently the last house phone in Nashville. I mean, how you don't have a caller ID, I don't even know. But with, on a happier note, we announced last alderman meeting that we were doing a fundraiser to feed veterans on Veterans Day. And a couple of the aldermen, you know who you are, so I'm not going to like swing the spotlight on you, very generously donated to support dinner, Thanksgiving dinner for veterans. So we appreciate that. And it was very encouraging to everybody who's trying to do that kind of work and make people feel welcome in a community that, you know, we march in the parade and we salute them and appreciate them, you know, with all of the pomp and the circumstance. But if we don't invite them into our communities and into our neighborhoods and into our businesses year-round, then it's still, we're still missing the mark. So I think it's important for us to remember them at the holidays too. Remember that we're not all approaching Thanksgiving equally with family and friends and people to support us. And being kind to each other may really make somebody's day because you don't know what kind of situation they're coming out of. On that note, I would like to express my condolences as well to Lisa Moran on the loss of her father. I know she's had a rough time. I know she's become something of a name check for people who are, have differences with Alderman Moran. I do not think those people necessarily were aware that she was grieving and is experiencing personal tragedy. But I would say, Lisa, you're your dad's daughter. You're strong and you're supported by people around this board, people in the community. And we've all had suffering, we've all gone through the loss of parents, even in holidays. And the grief doesn't go away, that memory's never changed. But we can find new purpose, we can find other people who remind us of them, and we can carry on in our own individual ways. So, thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. And I did promise Attorney Bolton that I would not wish every single person individually by name in Ward III a happy Thanksgiving. So I'm just going to collectively say to the entire city, happy Thanksgiving. Especially those in Ward III. And in keeping with some of the mayor's remarks relative to the taxes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying that. I know that I've been talking to many residents relative to the same thing. Seeing a $1,200 bill that wasn't there before is quite disconcerting, and I understand that. And I'm not going to give the civics lesson, but I just do want to quickly tell And I'm not going to give the civics lesson, but I just do want to quickly tell people that the state of New Hampshire is what we call a Dillon Rule state. We don't get to make all the decisions. It's made up and conquered, and they tell us when we can change from that. So, for those of you who want a little civics lesson, look up Dillon Rule State versus Home Rule State, and you'll understand where, truthfully, many times, the city's hands are tied. I'm just going to quickly mention about the bench cushions. I agree, those are uncomfortable, but the cushions that were there before, I don't know about any of the other Aldermen, but I got complaints that people were slipping and sliding, and then they felt uncomfortable that it was unsanitary, that they were sitting on it, that other people had been sitting on. So, you kind of weigh that, but I do understand, I do understand the issue with the uncomfortable, so I want, I do want to acknowledge that. The, I did go around for Franklin Street School to all of the neighbors within Green, Winter, Locust Terrace, Charles, and Franklin Street, and put up a, to every home there, a new map as to how everything would be rerouted. And there are a lot of one-ways, and you can go halfway down this street in two directions, and then the other half, so on. So, I hope those residents did get that. I did send it out in emails, do, and asked people to share that. And I did ask for electronic signs that we're told that are going up. So, if anybody has any questions, most people do know my phone number. I do want to wish condolences to Lisa Moran and Alderman Moran and their family. As a person who no longer has family to have Thanksgiving with, I know that loss. So, for us, we're doing it with friends that we've gotten to know that are in the same boat. It's kind of, you make new families. But that first Thanksgiving, first holiday is always the hardest, especially when it hits right at the holidays. So, my heart goes out to all of them. Relative to the elderly tax exemption, we did half the job. We increased the amount that would be exempted, but we did not change the, what I'll refer to easily as the means test type of things. And that, again, is only doing half the job. So, you know, at some point, that may need to be looked at, probably sooner than later, but it's, it got something done, but truthfully, probably not enough. And as far as the elderly tax credit, there's also two other things. There's something called an Elderly and Disabled Tax Deferral Program, and that's for those that are over 65, who've lived in that home for five years, as well as those who are disabled, that have lived there for at least one year. And you can go through this process to get deferred. The state also has a program that is low and moderate income tax relief for, but only for the state education portion of your bill. And there is an application. So, if you do go to the city's website under assessing and look at the exemptions and credits, the tax deferral is there, the low and moderate income tax relief is there as well. I strongly suggest that people look to that. The tax deferral is for undue hardships. There is an interest that does go with that. There's a 5% annual accrued interest on that, just so that I get that out, and people don't think we told them something differently. So, I suggest that everybody look what they can. Again, I got a lot of calls of people saying, you know, "Why can't you do it incremental? Just do a small amount this time and do a small amount later," and so on. We are tied. I talked about the Dillon Rule. We are tied to what the state tells us we can and what we can't do. People have said, "Why are you doing commercial tax rate the same as residential?" That is based on the state. We can't change that. It's got to be equal. There has been legislation that's been put through to try to change that. It has been defeated up in Concord, because more of the complexity of it than the quality of it. I'd like to thank Emily for coming back to the city. I appreciate it, and the mayor and everyone that had a hand in bringing her here. To the senior event, I was of age, and I am of age, and I will be technically a year older, I guess, on Friday. So, I could have gone to that, but truthfully, I looked at it as I had one day off. I did go to the Best Buddies, and I want to thank Alderman Kelly for having bought the table and allowing us to join her at that. It was a really good time. Scott McCullough was over the moon to see Alderman there from the city, actually, and to see a firefighter there as well. He was going around telling everybody that the fire department was there from Nashua. I thought that was quite funny to hear him say that. And I was going to leave this to Alderman Lopez, but on Saturday, we're going to be kicking off the Delaney's House Event, their Christmas competition. For those of you who don't know that, what the Alderman Lopez and Ms. Morgan started was that we create a competition, I guess you would call it, a floor war. And we ask them to decorate their floors. We bring out all the decorations and so on, and each floor decorates. And then, through the generosity of the city, not the city per se here, the residents as well as the businesses in it, we give out gift cards to the best, but we usually make sure everybody gets something that's there. It is a fun time. I think just before Christmas, we will do the voting. We go up to each floor. Usually, there's one floor that tends to go way over, and it's extraordinary what they will do, but it's fun to be there and so on. And then, just to reiterate again, I know I'm jumping all over the place because my notes are every which way. The abatement is, the moment you've got your bills, you are able to file for the abatement. And I suggest anybody, I've heard people who said, "I haven't done anything in my house for 18 years." They did not have somebody there to come in and do, and look at their home and so on, so they have to do the best, guesstimate based on any building permits that were or weren't pulled, things that within their neighbors, if a neighbor sold a house and so on. I'm not saying that anything will change, but it's always worth trying to go through the abatement process. And then, I do want to reiterate something that Commissioner Susi had said. Much like the county, the state imposes things on the city and the county that we have no say on. And those are, I think it was referenced, the $4.4 million extra in retirement, and so many other things. So, we did keep the budget below inflation. It does not help you when you get that huge tax bill. But I do want to reiterate that we did do, and we did keep it under inflation, and we did it without having to cut services. So, thank you very much, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, condolences to Alderman Moran and his wife Lisa, loss of her dad. I also heard a lot from my constituents this week, and I can assure you, when I was out and I was stopped out on Shady Lane just the other day, I didn't say it was the state. I didn't say that. I said there were things that we can do in this body, and I did my best to do them. And I think that instead of looking at things that you can't control, I don't know, there's some prayer out there, the Serenity Prayer or something, focus on the things that you can control. And you can. You can vote no. You can put plans up to cut spending, to give money back to the folks, and you can focus on what you can do. And I think that, I think it's unfortunate that we had to hear that tonight, especially this time of year, but those are true stories, and that's what happens. Everything we do in this chamber matters, and it affects the people, either within your constituency but in this city. So, I would just ask that we think about that moving forward. I'm excited for Thanksgiving. My house is filling up. I'm excited to also run the turkey trot on Thursday and go to the stroll, which has been a couple of years. And I wish everyone in this chamber a very happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy it. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. Be relatively brief, but I would like to offer our condolences, my condolences, and from my family to Lisa and Alderman Moran on the loss of their loving father and father-in-law. And just want to wish everybody in the city a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
I would like to congratulate Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter in getting that grant. That's an incredible amount of money for them. That's really, really wonderful. My condolences also to the Moran family and the loss of Lisa's father. Also, my condolences to the Holland family. Dan Holland was a great guy. I met him, I don't know, 20 years ago or so during the review and comment process. Very, very nice man. My condolences to his family as well. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you and to everyone in the city.
Alderman O'Brien?
I have committee announcements?
Committee announcements.
Thank you. You're not going to be that quick, Madam President. You want to start here?
Committee announcements.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night being Wednesday, we were supposed to have infrastructure. I'm very thankful for my committee, so I'm giving you the night off. I know there's pies to be made and turkeys to be plucked, so please get to it. For those of you that are not going to be out Friendsgiving and roaming the streets of Main Street, you know, but we're going to reschedule to, from tomorrow night to December 6th, and that will be the joint meeting of infrastructure and P E D C. So, I would recommend, emotionally, stuff on the infrastructure is just the stop sign issues. Please take a look at it. It would just, expert idea, the meeting quicker and get into the agenda. Thank you.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman Dow?
Monday, there's a special hearing and a budget.
Alderman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. The Cultural Connection had canceled their meeting for the entire year. So, we'll reconvene in January, and I'd like to wish that committee happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the November 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:53 PM. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.